Twenty eighth, four P M., and I'd like to welcome everybody to our Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Do we have any public comments today? All right, thank you. All right, that'll move us on to item one of our items for presentation and discussion, which is our monthly report review for October. Commissioner Graves, do you have anything you'd like to discuss?
I just have a, really, just a few comments. One of the things I like seeing when I scroll through these reports is how many community partnerships we have. You know, when you see that, there's a fire department training at O M A., or, you know, the different ways we can make that work, and I really enjoy seeing that. On the police department report on page thirty-two, I just wanted to comment that I like seeing that the officers have been attending so many community events and helping with things behind the scenes, like parades and things like that. And then on page forty-one, I thought it was great that the community policing unit has placed four of our homeless community, or of our homeless community into state housing and has been helping with supplies and services. So I really appreciate the work that goes into that as well. I do want to say on behalf of Ottawa Main Street, I know there is an email sent out about our report for our last meeting that we had in November, which I guess, yeah, that we would have approved of the October minutes and report. We actually had a full day training with the state director that day, and there, we didn't have enough to approve the minutes, so that's why they were not included. But it was a busy day. They did have board training, and again, the state director came down and kind of gave us some direction, so that was really informative. And then Paul's here, and I don't have a question. I just wanted to say on page sixty-four of the F C D C report, I know it mentions a Panasonic wave and how we'll prepare for that. I do, you know, agree with that, and also, I know as local businesses expand, like Calmar will have, you know, a smaller wave, but still a lot of work to do with that and kind of make some of those issues even more urgent as well. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kayler?
I have questions that I'm guessing, and I don't want to steal Commissioner Skidmore's thunder, but we did have a nice budget report beginning on page three, which indicated the expenditures that have been up till, really, till the end of October. I noticed that there are on several of these budgets, they are eighty-three percent of the year, but they're dramatically lower than that. Are there, and this can be something that comes back to me, are there things that are planned expenditures that we just haven't realized yet, or what are we looking at on some of those? And I don't, I don't want to call any specific ones out, but I looked at those that were below fifty percent, which is a thirty-three percent difference. Are there expenditures that we're planning on, or are there just things that we weren't ready for, or any particular reason? It's always nice to be under budget, but just wondering what we were, right in there. So beginning like on three, you've got, you know, like city manager budgets below fifty percent of expenditures as is like.
So let me start with, is there going to do a minute or so?
Yes, go.
Okay, okay. So on that one in particular, we had budgeted a hundred percent of the city manager salary out of the general fund for this year, and we ended up moving twenty-five percent to each of the utility funds.
Okay.
And so that lowered our, that'll be, that's the one anomaly in that division. It's related to that one salary.
Okay.
Others.
I noticed in some of the wastewater and electric fund, like, I mean, I know it's a small amount, but we had like a non-operating budget, again, small, six thousand dollars. Not small to average citizen, but small in comparison to the whole entire budget for the city. And then like some maintenance stuff for wastewater, are there things that we're seeing coming up, or that we should see, or?
I'm gonna, I have to go back and look at the detail on those. I do know that if it's in the transfers category, we have not made all of our year-end transfers. And for non-operating, I want to, it's just a guess without looking at it, on some of them, that's where we budgeted for retirements if they were to occur, so, but in some of those cases, those aren't occurring or haven't occurred yet, and so that wouldn't have been spent yet. And then also, I think that in a couple of those non-operating, there were lease payments that were still yet to be made. I think those have occurred at the beginning of December now, or at the end of November. So you'll see those in the November report.
Great. That helps give citizens some insight if they're looking at that and saying, you know, tell me, tell me about where the budget, budget is. On page eight, on the Bank Midwest monies, we are earning a big lump in zero percent interest. Is there a?
So those are past-through accounts? Well, I'm sorry, the payroll is, that balance is in there because we transfer money in for every payroll, and then we draw from that. So there is a balance in there that just stays in there over time. And then also, the bulletproof grant money, that is, that is in a zero percent interest account. We've talked about moving that over to our operating account. And not, I'm not certain as to why it was set up separately before, but we've talked about what do we want to do with those funds?
Sure. Okay. Just hate to see zero percent.
Absolutely.
If there's, if there's any capacity to.
We can look into.
Move stuff through.
What we can do with those.
I did also, when I was going through the O M A. budget, realized that, I mean, how wonderful it is, the revenue summaries that we are receiving, and specifically for lease and rental, and for charges for services and other revenue, those are above projected revenues that we were real, had been realized, at least by the end of October. Have we, any idea, have we made any changes, did we make changes in next year's budget based on how we were forecasting this year's budget?
We did. We did increase those.
Good.
With the anticipation, have things will continue to roll the way they are.
And I recognize when this budget was being put together, it was a whole COVID, where like, oh, goodness, not really sure what we're going to do here, and I know that the O M A. was really hit hard with how that worked, but good, thank you. I think that that's it. That's all I have for today.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Clayton?
I'm gonna follow Commissioner Kayler and steal a little bit of Mayor Corbin Skidmore's thunder, so. And on page eight, just kind of highlighting, I see that we moved several million, it looks like. I looked back, and I believe in August, we were at four and a half million in our K M I P S investment, and I know we've talked about moving some of that liquidity from Kansas State Bank, where we're earning three hundredths of a percent interest. I know just, for example, on page nine, the investment schedule breakdown, and looking at that C D. that we have for Kansas State Bank at point three percent. So a million-dollar C D. we're earning three thousand dollars, and compared to some of these other rates, you know, we've got some three and a halves, threes, two and a halves. I think we'd be remiss to not continue the discussion, you know, what level we're comfortable with moving more funds kind of from general checking, or our operating account kind of over to that. I would definitely personally like to, I guess, see information kind of on that, because, you know, it looks to be potential of thousands of dollars in interest that we're missing out on if we do.
Do you mind if I?
No, go, yeah, please do.
So on that one specifically, and thank you for bringing that up, because sometimes the timing of our monthly reports, we're so far behind that things have happened since then. So that million dollars matured on November third, and it was at point three percent. We did go out to the banks for bids on those, and we did receive some back, and they were significantly better bid rates from our local banks than they have been in the past, but they didn't meet our K M I P required minimum rate. And so we were able to move that million dollars over to our K M I P account, and instead of the point three that we were making, it's now at four point zero eight percent. We invested that at a one-year fixed rate.
Excellent.
And in fact, we do have another three million maturing on the first, and we'll have further conversations about how we want to, and it's already in our K M I P account, but we will discuss more about how we want to reinvest. And those rates today for the one year are at four point zero three, as opposed to the four point zero eight, so they change downward just very slightly. Some of the others are, a hundred and eighty days is at three point nine two, even just in our overnight account, it's at two point five. So, so we're still at those rates are better, is what's being offered, and what we can do to reinvest.
Overnight is at two point five?
Overnight is at two point five, two percent.
And just to kind of, so we're aware, like that overnight account, the money that's in that, worry to need that in case of an emergency to get it back into like an operating account, what's the timeframe on that in terms of getting a true liquidity?
So the overnight account truly is like within the next one or two days, it's just as long as it takes to wire it out, to notify and wire it out. Anything else, it is fixed for that period of time. So when we structured this, we tried to keep, tried to find that balance between more liquid and not as much. So we, the overnight, we didn't leave a lot in the overnight account. I think right now there's just interest in there that's been accruing, and then everything else is at thirty and above. But we did also leave enough in our operating account, which is at K S B. right now, because to be able to cover all of those expenses that we expected through the end of the year, but even then some. So if we felt like, so some of our grant dollars that have come in that we haven't spent yet, if we knew that we had, we're going to be obligated with something through the end of the year, the next three or six months, we didn't move that over into the investment pool. We left that where it was because we knew we're going to end up being obligated to that in a, in a period of time. We probably could move that. We did take more of a conservative approach, but like you, you said, we, we have gone up to eleven million being invested right now, whereas we were sitting at far less than that before. So it is worth taking another look at and seeing if we can invest even more than that. As we approach year end, we have some, had some other larger expenses, you know, before the end of the year, but then I think we can, our first distribution for taxes comes out in January, or comes to us in January, so then we'll be able to take another big look at, okay, where we think we're going to be for the next six months.
Awesome. Oh, I didn't sell all your thunder on my, you're good. Thank you. And then the other thing I had was page forty-two, I believe. I just liked seeing that, according to the twenty-twenty-one K B I. crime index, that we are considered one of the safest communities with similar populations and community makeup. And I, you know, saw the note that obviously, yes, some things are increasing in terms of some theft and burglary, but all in all, being a safe place to live is a fantastic thing, and I, I think those statistics obviously show that more than just we can say anecdotally. That is it that I have.
All right, thank you. Mayor Corbin Skidmore?
Yeah, echo some of the same comments. I, I think this percent of budget year and the expenditures, I think that's something new. I haven't seen it in a year or before, but I like that, and this is all the departments, like O M A., and everybody's on there, and so general funds, so it's good to see that a lot of these things are under budget, so that's a good thing, so I like seeing that. That's a good thing to keep on bringing to us. I appreciate that. Let's see.
Yeah, I guess on page eight, I think I have some comment on there, too. Yeah, I was wondering about that C D. that matured on the first of November, and like you said, that one's coming up in early December, so it'll be good to see what we can get out of that. And again, the operating funds, I just sort of look at that as a checking account, thinking, how can we continue to bring that down? I think we have brought it down from twenty million down to fifteen-eight. That's a good direction. I can see it coming down even more, but we can talk about that again sometime, too. But these rates are pretty remarkable right now, and just add revenue to our bottom line, so I like seeing that. On page twenty-seven, it talks about volunteer firefighters. I don't know why I missed that other times. Michelle, what is the, do we have volunteer firefighters, or Tim?
We do. There's a fire fighter. Sure. We have, right now, we have. Make it up there. Yeah. So currently, we have seven. We don't have a magic number. We try to keep it below ten, and we, they have requirements they have to meet physically, and every month they have to spend so many hours. So our goal is just additional personnel, you know, on scene. We used to, they used to wear different helmets and different gear. I've done away with all that, you know, if they're qualified as our, our full-time folks, then there shouldn't be any, any difference in, in what they wear, and so very beneficial on the fire scene, and they come in, ride on trucks, and, and do all that, so. I believe we have, have seven, three females, and so.
Okay, are they only paid when they're active, or how's that?
Yeah, so per, per call, fire call, that is, and then they get paid on meeting nights, and they come in and ride.
Well, it's a great idea to have that, because we don't need all of them all the time, I suppose, at full time, which allows us to save some money, but you still have qualified people we need. I think that's a great idea. Could it also be a pool to pull from if we need full-time firefighters?
Yes, and so years ago, the only way you could be hired full-time is if you were on the volunteers.
Okay.
And then we, we came up to where we didn't have anybody that was qualified, and so we had to open it up to, to the public. But yeah, that is an opportunity to get to know them and see how they work prior to, you know, hire them full-time if they're, if they have all the prerequisites and their things.
Ten pages.
Yep, yep, it works out well.
I agree. It's good news. All right, yeah. And then Commissioner Graves, something you brought up, too, on page thirty-two, the C S O. Alexander, taken it toward the law enforcement center, those two. I think those things are great, also coffee with the cop, those things. And just thinking about, especially like our young people, if they can see what job opportunities there are in Ottawa even before they get to age, and know, hey, I might want to be a police officer in Ottawa. And if we can, I, sometimes I think if we can hire local people, they may be more likely to stay local and stay here, instead of losing them sometimes like we have. But I think it's a good idea, incorporate that, along with what Paul does with the senior van the job, or junior van the job, I guess, and so if we can get more people on all departments to be exposed to city opportunities, I think it's a greater chance maybe to get some of them to stay here, not lose them out of town. So good, keep that up. I think it's a great idea. Is the coffee with a cop successful, or how's that going?
Well, the one in the report was on national coffee with a cop day, so that's kind of a day each year to kind of promote that.
Okay.
It was a little bit less attended than some of them had in the past.
Okay.
That kind of ebbs and flows depending on year, popularity of those.
Well, and they.
We'll continue to have it. I'm an everyday coffee drinker, so I'm good.
That's good. Thank you for that. Let me see here, and I guess, I don't know if Vanessa's on with us right now. Vanessa, are you here?
I'm here.
Great. I just want to ask you about the K S U. lecture that you performed on campus, and, and how that went, and what your thoughts were doing that in the future?
Yeah, that was really exciting. Thanks for asking. It's Vanessa Cowie, Executive Director of Prairie Paws Animal Shelter. It's a, it's the second time I've given a similar lecture, and I'm just thrilled that it's part of the curriculum now. So veterinary students were not really exposed to working in animal shelters, they were not really taught what that looks like, and now as our industry evolves, we rely on them so heavily. And so to kind of get on my soapbox for an hour in front of the next generation of veterinarians is a dream come true. So, yeah, I really hope to do it again. It was amazing. I loved it.
Good to hear. Well, I just know students at lectures at K S U. never fall asleep, do they?
Not in my lecture.
Go on. All right. I won't say anything more about that then. And then I saw the microchip thing you had, event going on here, that looked like pretty good success with forty-nine or fifty animals?
Yeah, that was the library. That, that was their idea. Lisa Slavin at the library partnered with us and put on that really cool event, and we did the microchips, and they did the rest of the work, and there's Terry. They advertised it. I just got to attend and torture some animals for a couple hours, and that was, it was great. It was a really good idea. I hope we do it again. Can't hint much, much.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa, thank you, Terry, so they're in here. I don't see them, but, yeah. Oh, there. Great idea, like, Terry, thanks, thank you very much for doing that. It's a great idea. Keep it up.
Thank you. It was a great partnership with them.
Wonderful. Good news. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you. I just have one comment on page eighteen, just about the permits issued this year. We have issued forty new single-family houses. I believe all of last year was thirty-four, so we're ahead of schedule. So that's nice. It's nice to know that even with interest rates rising and people kind of scaling back on purchases of those, we're still building and moving forward, so that's good. At this time, as I do every month, I'll give any of the directors, if they would like, a chance to discuss their report with us if they would like. Oh, you want to say that?
I'll go up there.
Okay, great. You are.
I got it. You're on November. Yeah, so, I mean, a lot of things have happened since, since this report, so it's kind of fun to go back and see how much things have changed even within the last month, but the Spook Parade was awesome. It was my first Main Street event, and it was a perfect intro-level event. No kids got ran over, and everybody got candy, so, so that was awesome. That was a success. Over fifty-five businesses participated in it and handed out candy. I am still working on that roundup to make a change for the month of February. Joy and I sent out that email, and we actually have a couple of businesses that have said that they are excited to participate and to put them on the list, so I think that that's going to be awesome for, for all of the nonprofits that will benefit from that. I've also, just here and there in my free time, been helping out the Oh, Santa is Coming to Town, and that is where at Grub and Chug, there's a tree where you can go and pick off an ornament and then adopt a kid, or adopt a kid to give presents to for Christmas. So I've been helping out making up, making the ornaments, organizing that with a spreadsheet with Wendy. And then the Christmas movie Marathon Parade was an upcoming event, but it is now done, and I've heard a lot of awesome things from that event. I think that, I mean, I wasn't everywhere and anywhere. I actually didn't get to see Main Street and how busy it was, so, but from the photos, it looked very busy, and it looked like everyone had a good time. So obviously, there are things that we can learn from that event and get better from. So I've, I've been taking suggestions today. I spent the majority of part of my day emailing all the participants and saying thank you, and then also sending them a link for feedback, that they can put certain feedback and let us know what they liked and what they didn't. Yeah, and obviously, there'll, there'll be more stuff about the Christmas parade and that kind of stuff on November's, so.
Have we announced to one to float?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, or I haven't on social media yet.
Go ahead.
But I don't have them.
Free match.
And then.
Raptors, it was Raptors second.
Raptors, third.
Yes, and then Walmart won the corners. So, yeah, yep, yep, and they all have the trophies. The only trophy that I still have is the corner one, but I emailed her today, so she will get that one very soon. Yeah.
It was amazing. It was, you know, there, there are always going to be people who say, well, why was it at nighttime, or why was it doing this, or it was amazing, and it was literally the best one I've seen, so I was very excited to see it.
It was awesome.
Well, I'd certainly like to thank you, because I got a lot of credit for that decision, and it had nothing to do with me, so. I want to, I personally want to thank you and Tiffany and Main Street Association. You guys did a great job the other night. And as I told Tiffany the other night, as I was passing across the vein, as it was starting, just to see those, those lights going, you know, was amazing. Not, not the lights on the buildings, the lights from the police cars, and just the ambiance of what was happening was, was wonderful. So you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you made the rain hold off until the pregnant.
No, I, I've been telling everyone that was me.
That was really on time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Can't take full credit for a lot of things, but I will take credit for the rain, absolutely, any day. Well, it, I, well, when I was updating everybody, I mean, all my friends over at OU. were texting me and my family members from Colorado and all that kind of stuff, and so everyone was worried about the rain, and I said that it got, the only time that I felt like it was really not good was when Santa was coming down, so, and he was the end, so it was, it was perfect.
He goes through all kinds of weather conditions.
Totally, all the time. Absolutely.
He's due it.
He's got it. I agree.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the effort.
And we would have been in the dark except for you throwing the switch.
Yes.
Seriously.
True, true.
Were you in too much?
You control the weather, you control the lighting.
We, we did, we met a great team.
Were you in too much trouble at home? Or did you get in trouble at home?
I did.
I cut it out of the video.
Edit it. All right, any other directors want to make any other comments? All right, as I say every month, there's eighty-six pages this time, so if you think nothing's happening or nothing good's happening in our town, feel free to read all these eighty-six pages and improve your own, so good information here. All right, that'll move us on to item two, which is our resolution authorizing, a request to waive the statutory requirement to use GAAP generally accepted accounting principles based accounting for twenty-twenty-three. And, no, you're good, right here. You're good. What you want, face the camera.
No, this is great. Totally fine. So this is an annual request brought to you to modify the requirement, or not modify, but to exempt ourselves from the requirement to use GAAP reporting in our financial statements and replace it with more of a cash basis, or what we call budget basis accounting or financials in our annual financial statements. The difference really is that GAAP accounting is very, it's, it's very intense, it has a lot of requirements attached to it, it does cost us more money to audit, to create, there is a lot involved in reporting that way, and also, it's, it's a lot more difficult for just our residents, our customers, our internal staff, our, you guys, all of our citizens to really understand. And in, in the cash basis and budget reporting process, it is so much easier to be able to look at comparisons, to be able to relate back to the regular monthly reports that you're already seeing. So anyway, Kansas statute allows us to exempt ourselves from that, and so that's our, our request. It is, it does require a resolution be adopted, and this will be the first time that you're seeing it, but we would recommend that the resolution be placed on your next regular meeting agenda. Also happy to bring this back a second time next Monday if you want to discuss further, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions?
The G. does mean generally accepted accounting principles, so we're doing generally, but not this time, not this on this particular purpose.
There's, there's no rush on this. You don't need this before the seventh?
No.
Okay. That's our next meeting.
All right.
I personally don't, I don't know that I need to see it again. I mean, this is the eleventh or twelfth time we've gotten, or at least I've gotten it.
Yeah.
There's not a whole lot we can do about it. If we said that we didn't want to do GAAP-based funding, where would we be?
Well, we could, we could follow GAAP, and we could.
Yes.
Invest a lot more time, energy, and dollars into converting our financials. That would be the other option.
We're not, of course, the only municipality that does.
No, in fact, most municipalities way, use the GAAP waiver.
Yes.
And truly those that have large financial, not just investments, but also financings, and a lot of your large cities that are dealing in really high-dollar projects have a really a much bigger budget than ours. You'll see them do that.
Bigger budget, bigger population.
Bigger population, thank you. And they're, they use it, originally, I think it was really put in place so that their financials would match those that their investors are seeing when they go out onto the bond market and those types of things, but really, we, I don't know that we've seen any difference in, in doing it one way or the other. When we go out to the bond market, we saw a pretty, really good response.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Kayler. I don't think we need to see it again, but certainly I'm in favor of moving it to our seventh agenda.
I agree.
Yeah, that's good.
Sounds good. All right. Let me move us on to our continued discussion of our wastewater utility rates.
Okay, so Director Tharp is not here today, so it's just me, but this is a follow-up to our last.
But this is a follow-up to our last week's discussion. If you don't mind, I'll say here that we don't have to look through my head. And we do have a presentation or a PowerPoint for you. This is updated from last week and I did start it out by just a discussion slide on what had changed from the previous week. And again, again, this is our second discussion on wastewater. And the first time we just brought, we brought to you some of the background information, a couple of options to think about and look at. And out of our conversation, we made a couple of changes to this discussion just to give you a little more information. So we did add into here the breakdown of the customer accounts. When we get to that slide, I'll, I'll go over that. The four-point-five percent option, we had talked after the meeting a little bit with, with one of the commissioners and said, you know, it really makes sense to just round that up to five percent. Sometimes it's easier to hear five percent versus a half percent. And so we did just round that option up and insert that instead of the four-and-a-half percent. And then also, we were asked to provide a calculation that what it might look like in order to close the gap between expenditures and revenues on, on an annual basis. Like what would that maximum amount be in order to close that gap? And so we did do that. And then also, last week, we weren't prepared to provide that local utility rate survey and we have inserted that into the presentation as well. Okay, next slide, two slides actually, one more. There you go. The only thing that really changed, the purpose of our rate discussion, I think this is important, you've already heard this, but for anyone who might be listening, is that our last wastewater rate increase was in 2021. And a great question came after the meeting, which was, when was that adopted? And it was actually adopted in 2018. It was a four-year rate resolution or ordinance establishing rate increases over four years. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it was maybe five percent for the first two years and then it dropped to one or two percent for the two years after. Our current rates, as they said, right now are nineteen dollars for the minimum charge and three dollars and forty-eight cents for our volume charge per CCF. In this utility, we do have existing debt and a special sales tax for wastewater. Both of those, and the surcharge, I'm sorry, the surcharge and the special sales tax, they both end in 2024. So when you're looking at the financials, you will see a drop in revenue and also a correlating drop in expenditures, which is the transfer out to the special fund where we pay for some of that debt. So we do accumulate the surcharge revenue comes into the wastewater fund and then we make a corresponding transfer out at the end of the year. Then that does not actually cover the full debt, which was wastewater treatment plant improvements, which is why we put the special sales tax into place and why we have that debt. But we make the rest of that payment, that debt payment out of the special sales tax. So both of those go away at the end of 2024. We do still have existing debt beyond that date, but those, that you will see the corresponding revenue and expenditure decrease in there.
So we could choose to put that on the balance in 2024 to extend that sales tax.
So that would be something we could discuss.
Do you know what it is?
It's.
Is it a half?
I, I think it's a half.
It's point one percent.
Oh, it's point one, is that?
Point one is the wastewater, yes.
Yeah, what's the surcharge?
The surcharge is five dollars. All right, yes, I'm pretty sure it's five dollars. Okay, so, and as our expenditures begin to, continue to increase over time, so do our fund balances start to decline over time as we, you know, we're not currently closing that gap between expenditures and revenues. And then down at the bottom, you'll see where we did add in the number of forty-five hundred residential customers and five hundred and forty-seven businesses. And the impact of that is that it does take longer to, to generate the revenue that you need for some of those really large capital improvements or those that cost more. Okay, next slide, please. This is the current financial forecast. Of course, we talked about this last time. Those capital expenditures, they did, they do encompass some projects that are in the out years, but they also do include the initiation of a reserve fund specifically for wastewater in which we would, over time, hope to accumulate a million dollars out there for those times that you need a reserve, a fund balance reserve where you may have not expected something that might have happened in order to be able to use it for maybe, say, a capital expense itself, but then also establishing a reserve for vehicle and equipment replacement as well. Next slide.
On that same one, though, I see in twenty twenty-five, the revenue drops off about half a million. That would be approximately that point one sales tax, or is there something?
So this is the surcharge. The sales tax doesn't come into this fund. It has its own special fund, but the surcharge is about five hundred and sixty thousand a year. So yes, so you'll see the revenue drop by about that and the expenditures will also drop by approximately that same amount because we won't be transferring that out. So the revenue is not coming in and the related transfer won't.
Okay, and this would be if we did nothing, right?
This is if we did nothing. This is where we would be today if we did absolutely nothing. Now, I, the caveat here is, this is just a representation of what it might look like. We would obviously never get to zero. We wouldn't allow that to happen. We would have to make some major alterations to our operations. We'd have to make some, some, some very large cuts. And then also, we would defer those capital expenditures, of course, until we could get to the point where we can manage that going forward if we did nothing. Next slide, please. This is just the ten-year cash balance history. We did cover this last time. Nothing has changed here. If you're fine with that, we could just skip over this and continue. These are those capital projects. We talked about the establishment of a capital projects fund, some dollars to go towards future equipment replacement, and then the, some capital improvements. The two large ones that we mentioned last time, but I think it's worth mentioning again, is for everyone here, plus also any of the public that might be listening, is that really when we get to twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight and beyond, there's about nine million dollars in improvements for those two interceptor upgrades that need to occur. All that's reflected here is the start of those projects, which might be the design or our first payment towards one of them. But the reality is, we do need to build those balances, not so that we can pay for that in cash. That's not going to happen, but we do need to be able to make those debt payments. And because, as we talked about, we, it does take a while to build those cash balances. You want to be able to do those projects when we absolutely need to and be able to make those debt payments that would be corresponding to those. The future projects down below are ones that have been identified but don't have a year or a potential project dollar amount attached to them quite yet. Next slide, please. Last week, we talked about this being one of the options. This would be a one-dollar base charge increase each year for five years plus a six-percent annual rate increase each year for five years as well. As you can see, and part of our conversation was, the revenues do start gaining ground on the expenditures, but we don't surpass our expenditures in this option. We, our target fund balance, we do, we are above that in our first several years, but then we begin to drop below that with this scenario. This scenario would cause, for a base residential customer with only one CCF, this would cause an increase in each year, an additional one dollar and twenty-some cents each year over five years. At the end of five years, that would be a total increase over today's bill of seventy-four dollars and twelve cents.
But it would be each month during that year?
Each month is the dollar twenty-one. If you look at the annual impact down below, it's fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents impact in year one, an additional fourteen dollars and sixty-six cents in year two, and so on and so forth, until you get to five years, impact would be seventy-four dollars. And that's just a residential customer at one CCF. As we learned when we were talking about our water utility, most of our residential customers use anywhere between one and five CCFs in water, or one and seven, I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me. But keep in mind that wastewater is calculated on an average four months, which is typically your December through March usage of water. And then that's the amount that you pay for the entire year. So it's, you're not using, this won't change. So for every one customer, once their average is set, that's what you're going to receive in revenue all year from that same customer. It doesn't change month over month. Do you have other questions on this option? No, next slide, please. This one is a little more complicated, or at least it appears that way. It's really following the same methodology that we talked about when we were discussing water rates. But this is an increase to your base charge of just one dollar in 2023. But then in each of the years between twenty-four and twenty-seven, or years two through five, we did add it, or we increased it to two dollars per year. That is, the reason we did that is because the, if you look at the ending fund balances the way that they sit right now, there is a larger ending fund balance currently, but we needed to be able to make up some of that difference over time. So increasing that base rate does just bring you a static amount every month for every customer that doesn't change. So that would be increasing it from nineteen dollars to twenty dollars in 2023 and then to twenty-two in, in the following year, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight after that. The, this includes a five-percent annual rate increase. This in our first presentation was four-and-a-half percent. We rounded that up to the five just for ease of conversation. And this would be an impact each month in year one for a one CCF customer of a dollar and seventeen cents. For the first year would be fourteen dollars for the second year because we add the two dollars. Change, it does jump to twenty-six dollars and then twenty-six dollars out for the remainder year of those four years, the last four years. So this one is an, an five-year impact to the customer of a hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-four cents. Do you have questions on this one? This does generate more revenue over time and it does bring your ending cash balance closer to where we want it to be. Or it does, in fact, meet that targeted ending fund balance or close to in year five. So it does accomplish what you're trying to get to as far as an ending fund balance. The point I might make here is that your revenues don't cross your expenditures and as expenditures continue down the road, after five years, we will, we do still have the same conversation happening. As your expenditures are higher than your revenues, you will continue to see a declining fund balance. But of course, we didn't bring you ten years or more. We just brought you the five years to take a look at for this. And that's all we're recommending, is that you put five years into play for a rate increase because things can change. Capital projects can change, the timing can change, all of those things. Do you have questions on this scenario? Okay, next slide. This is the one that we brought to you as, just as it was part of our conversation. You asked the question, what would it take for our revenues to exceed our expenditures? And honestly, if you look over, well, you're, if you just look at the, the chart to the right, you can see that in years one and two, even at this proposed rate increase, it still doesn't cross it in year three. If we did two percent, or two-dollar annual base charge every year for five years and we increased rates ten percent in years one and two and seven and a half from years three through five, we would finally cross our revenues, would actually generate, we would generate more revenues than expenditures in years three through five. I believe we calculated in years one and two, if you really wanted to cross that, it would be about thirty percent. And we did not even put that up here because that doesn't, that, that's not something that would even be in discussion. And so this was kind of your worst-case scenario. What would it take to close that gap? Now, what I might point out is that it does generate far more than our twenty percent targeted ending fund balance. What it would do is offer the opportunity to pay cash for some of those future capital improvements as opposed to financing them. But we haven't talked necessarily about that being one of the goals of this conversation. But that is, those would be the, the benefits of doing something like this. But it, you can see that that impact to your customer down below jumps up. It, it basically doubles and the year-five-year total increase is about a hundred and forty-one dollars as opposed to what we had just previously talked about. Do you have questions on this? Okay, I, we didn't insert this option as, as something that you might be considering. If you have interest in seeing this or some other scenario, we're happy to bring anything back to you that you'd like to see. We did go ahead on the next slide.
Director Landis, if you're basing, I just, can you answer a question for me? Residential one CCF, what's that bill average per month right now? You know, you're basing a number off something.
I did it at twenty-two forty-eight. If it's, if it's nineteen dollars and then the one CCF rate roughly twenty-two forty-eight?
That sounds about right, yep.
Okay.
Without the surcharge or any of that, just your.
Yes, without the surcharge. Yes, thank you. That would be very close.
Thank you.
So about two-hundred-seventy-eight a year at that.
Yes. This is that local utility rate comparison that we had promised we would bring back to you. Right now, we are, this is just sorted on the very rate column for four persons at ten thousand gallons. And we, again, this was to make it comparable to your water utility rate study that we did in the, in the last discussions. We don't use gallons here, we use CCFs. But to make it comparable, we wanted to make sure that you were seeing it in the same manner. So currently, we are about, we are under Emporia, or just over Emporia, but significantly under some of the other cities or utilities. And on either option A or B, it does place us just slightly higher in the range overall, but not necessarily even to the middle of that range at this point. Not that, and this is more for anyone watching, but not that this really plays a part in our decision-making, but it is nice to see the impact of what we're considering against what other utilities are currently charging for the same type of service.
So would this be on page one-on-one, the one that is in front of us? Would that be for 2023 or is that for twenty?
This is as it says right now.
If we were to put in option A or B, though, that would be, would it be?
That would be for, for 2023, but using today's current rates for everyone else because we don't know exactly where they were going to be for next year. Do you have any other questions on this slide? This was new for this week. Really, the next slide is just about our review, our implementation timeline. Really, this is the second scheduled discussion for wastewater. We wouldn't put this back, bring this back to you until the, the end of December for a rate ordinance conversation. And then the rates wouldn't take effect until February of 2023, assuming that this timeline stays in place, that would give us time to notify customers for things to be played, you know, put into effect. And then it would take place in February. So other than that, that's all of the information that I had to share with you today. And really, for us and just like our other utility conversations, it would be helpful to us as a staff if we had some feedback from you as to which of the two options, or if you'd like to see other options presented to you, you would be more inclined to hold aside for our final conversation so that we know how to kind of prepare that last conversation for you in December.
Well, now just look at that option B. I think that target or the ending balance, or what, within sixty thousand of the target, I don't, to me, that, that'd be kind of a, a big compromise on what we're looking at without too much of, it's just a target, but yet getting pretty close to our target. I think any of your projections, and the further you go out, the less accurate you are, I realize, but yeah.
Yes, yes.
I, I feel the same way. I know, I know obviously what our goal is. And I do feel like the new option might be a little lofty. So I, as of right now, I do think option B. B is our best bet at getting to our end goal with these options anyway.
Can you remind me what the service charge or the surcharge is for?
The surcharge is for the improvements to the plant and these the, there might have been a main extension or something involved. And I can't remember exactly how long that's been in place. It's been for quite some time. Do you remember?
Yeah, it's the, there's three main interceptors, the two that we discussed for $9.3. Third one has been Laysbridge. That's the Southeast Interceptor. That project is just closing 19 years, so it's been.
Yeah.
So most likely, that surcharge will be dropped in 2024.
Yes, right now, the way it's written, that surcharge will come off in 2024. Yes.
Paul, his projections anticipate that to happen, unless some changes. Paul, I know these are pretty important to people looking to relocate or expand here, utilities and all these factors into it. I guess when we look at the other cities, other communities, what they're charging, just you have that information to say, hey, what better option than Lewisburg, you look at their water rates, or you have all that information and.
I don't have that. We can certainly do some research and someone have to go.
I just didn't want to go too high on that chart because we want to keep these reasons. This would ever be a reason why somebody would not come or come here. I hate that.
Well, I certainly like option B, too. I think C is lofty for sure. Yeah, and I just don't think it quite gets us where we want to be. So I'm a I'm a big fan of B.
I would agree. I like you provided C. I think it gives a good picture of that we were trying to find a compromise between meeting and obviously, like, what will impact the customers each month?
You know.
Do you know, for, could I, Director Hall?
Yes.
Do you know on looking at this with our our base being small, is there anything now, if someone builds a multi-family home apartment complex on water meters per unit? Because I know that was part of our issue, correct, with the base of only 4,500 is we have a bunch of multi-family units that have one water meter. So they're only paying one surcharge or one base charge.
There's not individual.
Water meters. Is that in current plans? Is that a requirement to have each domicile, basically, each residence have its own meter? Or is that up to overbuilds?
That's not typically how it's done, and there's no plan to try.
Do that, okay.
Push people to do that. I don't know where, we haven't talked about it. I think if you have a duplex, they're built as a duplex, so each one can have its own meter. You might be aware of that here for apartments. I'll see that. I can get more information on that if you'd like.
I was just, you know, thinking we have a few things kind of in the pipeline that are 45 plus units. And I don't know how they're planning to bill. I don't know how they're planning, obviously, to distribute water. But those are small things, 45 here, 45 there. We're building 40 new homes a year. In a few years, I think we'll be able to take 4,500 base clients to potentially 5,000. And if that can slowly grow, it spreads the burden over every more people.
Commissioner Clayton, I'd feel more comfortable with an email response to that question.
Yeah. No, that would be be perfect. I just, it's kind of spitballing, just kind of an idea.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions, comments, suggestions for Director Landis?
I think we will prepare our initial rate ordinance with the option B then.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that'll move us on to comments by our city manager. He's not here today, but I believe he's has a has Michelle Womp coming up to give us an update on our 2023 salary study.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. It's almost good.
Start.
So during the 2023 budget preparation, a compensation study was approved. And I just wanted to give you an update. An RFP will be sent out to compensation consultants on December 1st. What our timeline is, we want to receive the proposals by January 13. And a group will review and select the finalist. The contract will be signed, and the project will proceed as of February 13. And in our timeline that I provided or placed in the RFP, that project completion would be approximately approximately six months in that period of time. That's that's what I wanted to share with you.
To be warm again.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, okay. All right, that'll move us on to comments by our city commissioners. Commissioner Graves?
The other, or at our last meeting, Zach informed us that it was his birthday, and that we were free to bring treats. So I worked very hard at baking these treats for you and for everybody else in here. I think I'm gonna, I'm thinking galaxy brownies, but I'm not quite sure yet. I'm not there on the menu. So so everybody can grab a nice homemade brownie on their way out.
Thank you for COVID purposes for wrapping.
Yeah, it was a lot. It was extra.
We appreciate it.
A lot. Extra. So much. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Kayla.
Did anybody named Debbie help you?
Yeah.
No, no Debbie.
Okay, just wondering. I mean, I don't know a whole lot of them, but I'm just wondering.
No big or little.
Okay, whatever it takes. None of this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Clayton?
I just want to point out for anyone listening, I saw there was a post on on the Kansas News and online that South Beach Cove is facing the same issues that Not Lost is with their 30% food sales requirement. Just kind of want to say that there's work still going on on that. And we hope to have some kind of concrete information to share here before the end of the year with the direction that we hope to go and get some more information out to citizens, but work's being done on that. So I just want to be aware of that.
Other reasons, shop local.
Yeah, for sure.
Dime local.
Dime local. You can shop if there's something to buy there. Yeah, sure. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Skidmore.
There's two numbers, 47 to 27, no cats.
Notice how kind the KU individuals around this table have been to you during football season. I'm just wondering if you've noticed, because it's gonna, now that you've ripped off the Band-Aid, watch out.
I have no comments. A few announcements, December 5th, our study session here at 4:00 PM, and then December 7th is our 7:00 PM regular meeting. Anything else come before the commission this evening? I'll adjourn.